Good morning. For the record, Jase with Community Development. I'm going to go fairly quick because most of this has been covered. The request is to rezone property from AG to residential plant development to have a 92-bed assisted living facility. We've already seen where the property is located on Vanderbilt. There's a view for overall from the city. And of course, the site, which is the back half of the existing church property. A little comparison in that even though the property is zone agriculture, the land use is medium-density multifamily residential. It is the same land use as the condos to the south and the church to the north. Here's their overall master concept plan, but we have a little bit better. And as you can see, the same plan that they had submitted, shown you earlier. The four living facility buildings, the centralized office space, they are 30 feet from the rear property line. And they are showing their landscape buffers as far as depicting them on this. They had more elevations, maybe better elevations than were originally submitted with us. But this is a view from the front of their proposal. And this is from the back, looking into the courtyards. And this is sort of looking from the back, as I understand it, more where the condominiums would be looking down and towards the site. Their proposed uses are enumerated here. They are the dot living facilities and the things that you would anticipate would be needed to go along with them, including fences, food and beverage service, recreation facilities, et cetera. Here is a breakdown of the proposed setbacks. As you can see, from Vanderbilt, 50 feet, from Mango, 20 feet, 20 feet from the north, 30 feet from the south. With a maximum building height of 30 feet, minimum building separation of 10 feet. And that's for inside the complex, a minimum separation between the structures. And the open spaces at 40 percent. We did analysis for compatibilities required by the comprehensive plan in its senior staff report as attachment B. And we found that it is compatible with the comp plan. The environmental considerations, we had our environmental specialists go out and take a look at the property. The property over the years has been basically cleared and mowed. So there's nothing on the property that triggers the typical environmental concerns as far as there was no signs of gopher tortoises. There was no sign, there was no species of plants or anything of significance on the property. Traffic considerations, we did an evaluation of the information provided. And we found that based upon the comp plan, they would be able to build residential back there. And if they came in for a straight rezoning, they could come in and they could do a plat and have resident single-family homes without a hearing for the specific, single-family homes only for the general zoning. We looked at what kind of traffic that would generate. And simply put, the total daily trips are nearly identical. There's somewhere between five and 10 total daily trips difference. Their proposal, though, actually lowers the peak hour because with this 24-hour care facility, you have people coming in and out over a 24-hour period. We're in a single-family home, you have everybody coming in, and then morning peak and evening peak going to work and so forth. And so, as Mr. Banks represented, it is actually a little bit less on the peak hour for this use. The other thing we looked at was stormwater. And we are, since Irma in particular, but even before that, the city has been very cognizant of the conditions of stormwater throughout the city. Our comp plan, for instance, has a requirement of a 50 percent increase of what's required for water quality. And as part of that, we have an ongoing process where we are proposing amendments to our plans and so forth to evaluate drainage. And in particular, as we have become very aware, the large tracts of land around the city are quickly vanishing. And we have a lot of infill and redevelopment projects. And infill and redevelopment projects tend to need a little more analysis when it comes to the potential of flooding. And so, for that, we have proposed these conditions as set forth to evaluate the drainage as it comes in. To make sure that we've done our due diligence and that we've done the best to protect the community as a whole. I have a city engineer here, if anybody has specific questions about that. But I can try to answer those or I can have Stuart come up. So originally, they had, their original request had three deviations. And through several meetings and conversations with staff, they redesigned their site to eliminate two of the deviations. The third deviation really could not be eliminated. There's an existing road network that's on a 275-foot grid. And our code requires a 330-foot grid. But also in our comp plan, it says that we should maintain existing grid network. Well, it puts us in a quandary. So staff is supportive of the deviation because they have aligned the driveway with an existing road and it meets the existing road network, even though that network is in Collier County. This is just an overall findings of the things that we found that it is in compliance, meets the criteria for review of the comp plan. And we recommend approval as conditioned in our staff report, which includes the normal items they've listed plus our conditions A through J. And these are the conditions of approval, which include mostly drainage, but also includes some handicap criteria and some landscaping requirements. And I'll answer any questions.
There's something in here about trees. Did you do a study of trees on the site? And there was a comment that it's full of exotics, all the exotics have to be removed. Could you tell us a little bit more about the site from that perspective?
Sure. And I think there's a, I won't say, I'll say confusion, I think confusion is the best word. If you go out there and you look at it within the buffer area that Mr. Arnold depicted in his presentation, there are exotics. They will have to remove any exotics that are on their property. Since you're dealing in that property line, the property line wasn't specifically staked. I don't know how many of those exotics are on the applicant's property. You know, the way exotics go, they tend to just continue on. Whatever's on their property, they'll have to remove. We would encourage the residents to remove the exotics on theirs for their own safety and well-being. But as far as conditioning this project, there would be. I don't know exactly how much of those exotics is on that periphery.
Are there any specimen trees that have to be saved?
I just got the nod from Laura that she went out there and looked and there are no historic trees.
That means everything gets removed and then replaced with... Mr. Worcester.
I'd like to just ask the question, bring up this stormwater again. I'd like to ask the applicant if they've reviewed the conditions A through J and if they're willing to comply with all those conditions, which were presented just a second ago.
We're probably going to work with staff and rewording for clarity to make sure we all understand what we're doing. But basically, yes.
Explain, help me understand. We're going to vote on that today?
Yes, sir.
And you're saying that you're going to work? When are you going to do the work? Before we vote?
No. I envision that we'll have further communications with the staff after today before we go to city council just to make sure we all understand exactly what we're required to do. I like to try to avoid issues later that require lots of meetings and discussions so we can get the engineer just right on it.
Thank you.
Another comment that was in here somewhere was that this is an archaeological sensitive area. What does that mean to...
So, a good portion of Lee County is designated as the archaeological sensitive area. So you have to get a, and that's a map that comes out of the state. And they don't like to, they really don't want to show the places that are really concerning because they don't want people to go digging and looking for, you know, bones and arrowheads or whatever. And so, they put an overall area. They have to get what we call a dig prey certificate to dig. I doubt that that's going to be an issue. If it is an issue, that's a problem that we'll have to deal with from the state. But generally, those of us who have been doing this for a while know where the big areas are. But I will tell you that I had, I had a development come in not too long ago that fell within that criteria. And they had to change the construction type of their building in order to preserve it. So it doesn't prevent them from developing the property. It may change the standards by which they are allowed to. In all likelihood, and when I say all likelihood, I'm thinking 98 percent or higher, this is just in the overall area. You know, we had Indians here 1,000 years ago and they fished and so forth. Generally, you don't find them this far away from the water, but it still falls within the zone that the state has declared.
Thank you.
I'd like to raise a question that has not been addressed, that is very concerning to me. I've lived here long enough to know that every time there's a hurricane or hurricane threatened, that one of the first things that happens is that all homes or people living west of 41 are required to evacuate. And we're talking about putting 92 elderly citizens who are no longer able to live independently, but are meeting assisted living and for whom this mandatory evacuation is, there's no doubt, will fall upon them many times. So I'm thinking, this is a huge issue. How are we going to and where are we going to evacuate these people to? And one of the things that I have observed is that developers do these projects and then they go away. And this problem of what we do with terribly at-risk seniors will fall upon the city of Bonita Springs. That's where it will fall. And I haven't seen any discussion of that, and I find that troubling. I will say for the record that I'm not prepared to vote for this and carry on my conscience allowing something to be built that's going to put 92 of our most vulnerable citizens at potential risk. So I'd like to at least hear some discussion about that because I've heard nothing at all and that surprises me.
Yeah, let me offer this. First, the city requires an evacuation plan for residential and would require it in this instance. In this case, we have another level of government, ACA, that has standards that may have to be met in terms of an evacuation plan. And as you probably wouldn't be surprised, when you as a regular citizen have to evacuate is different in terms of timing than when you have to deal with senior housing. Plus, I will tell you that after Hurricane Irma, because of some conditions on the East Coast, ACA has gone through rulemaking to make those standards even more stringent in terms of generator requirements and other things for senior housing. So those standards will have to be met, both the city's, Lee County Public Safety, and ACA.
So I guess I would be more comfortable knowing a little bit more about what those standards are. The big problem is, where do you take people? Where do you take 92 citizens who you can't take to these big arenas that they put people in? These people will be, many of them on oxygen, many of them needing all kinds of extra conditions and extra aids. And you can say that there are requirements, but I don't see the availability anywhere around here. We had huge troubles with last time evacuating peoples to where they would go. And one of the things that's come out again and again is that we need as a society to stop putting people into at-risk positions, increasing the problem that we already have. That somewhere, sometime, we have to stop adding to the problem. And I think putting 92 at-risk senior citizens into a position like this is unconscionable for us to allow. And keep in mind, my mother's 100 years old, so I know a little bit about evacuating somebody. And she does live with my sister, so we have to do it ourselves. But what that takes to do it in a way that is safe for her, and I don't see how we could go forward with that without a far more thorough discussion of how this is going to impact these 92 people, but also our city. Because that business, oh, you have a plan, but your plan has to include not only, you know, how many, where are you going to get all the ambulances to take all these people? Where are you going to get all these things? And there are lots of new senior citizen housing projects around here that are going to be competing for those same services. So I don't think that, I don't see how I can at least go forward with this without a far better understanding of what's going to happen to these 92 people in that context.
Yeah, well, and let me respond to that because, you know, typically, the details of those plans are reviewed at the time of DO. We do, we're required to rely on the city, Lee County Emergency Management, Public Safety folks, and in this case, ACA. We don't know what that final plan will look like because there's a whole lot of agencies that are going to tell us more what that looks like. We do have the lady here who will be the future operator of the facilities. I mean, we can't tell you exactly what the plan will be in this case, but she can give you insight into what ACA requires. If you'd like her to come address that issue now.
Well, I certainly would. I don't know whether any else would.
I have to beg the indulgence of the...
Well, we'll take it in order, yes, we'd like to hear from her. But in the meantime, does the city have anything further that they, in their case in chief?
Just, I need to, for the record, enter the record for the city clerk, the file and the staff report. And as you're aware, in the staff report, we included comments from the public that we had gotten. And I have another packet of comments that have come in since the staff report went out that I'm giving to the clerk also.
I have a final question to ask the staff. And as I see this project, how many kitchens are in this project?
I'm going to defer to the applicant on that.
I think there are, there are four kitchens?
Central kitchen.
Five kitchens, central kitchen?
For the record, I'm Wayne Arnold. I think the total is five total kitchens.
Five kitchens. Five commercial kitchens?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Five commercial kitchens.
No, I think that's one commercial kitchen and four residential-type kitchens.
Which are service-type. All the food is prepared in one central kitchen and distributed to the service kitchens.
Yes.
And has that been a factor in your review of the site as it sits now in terms of personnel, service, dumpsters, and that kind of thing?
No, and yes.
Oh, and yes.
And the reason is, is the dumpster calculations, those are some things that they will submit to DO that we will review to make sure the dumpster is adequately sized. And they have to get the health department permits and so forth for the kitchen. We do look at the layout of the site, the parking, the demand. We do ask them for how many employees they're going to have and shifts. And so, we did look at that and that's part of the traffic. But as far as the actual functionality of certain aspects, those are things that are uttered at the DO. I will say that typically, you know, what we saw for the size of the dumpster should be adequate as far as the area. But they will need to submit all that information, including their architectural drawings and so forth when they come in for their DO.
Great, thank you.
Following up on Dr. Craig's point, is it fair to say that the number of people who could be housed in these 92 units could be up to 180 people? There's no two people in one room? Or is it just one person per unit?
I'll try to answer that.
Thank you.
As designed on your plan, it's designed for 72 bedrooms, which can accommodate up to 92 people.
Got it, thank you.
Did you want us to address the evacuation issue now or on rebuttal?
Is there anything further from the city? Your turn.
Hi, good morning. I'm Rebecca Townsend. I work for Solvayra Living. Will be the operator of this community. To answer your original question, I was here during Irma. I operated a senior living community here in Bonita Springs, which was one of the five listed. We did not evacuate, we're not required to evacuate. Most of the people that live in senior living and assisted living aren't on oxygen. They're not on complex medical care. Were required by the order of Governor Scott from about 14 months ago to have a generator that provides 82 degrees ambient temperature for more than 96 hours for all of the community, including the staff that volunteers, the family members that come to assist us. So it's uncommon for a community like an ALF to actually evacuate, even when there's a broader order to evacuate. We're often asked to shelter in place because we have all of the systems that are required to have a shelter in place. Again, thinking about the complexity of folks that live there. While they may need assistance with their daily living activities, they're generally not very complex medical needs that are provided under assisted living.
Can I ask you a question about the place that you said you did not evacuate? Where was it located?
In Bonita Springs.
But where?
In the landings. So just adjacent to or just behind the Outback Restaurant.
So you're on the other side of 41. Okay, that was my point about this particular project. Well, first of all, it's one-story and most of the kind of senior living situations are higher, are high-rises where it's easier to imagine sitting in place because if the water comes, if the flooding comes, if that Irma thing didn't turn as it did and come up over Marco and we had what they were predicting as a surge, I don't think that you're going to have a one-story place as close to the water as this particular piece of property is be told to stay in place. I can't imagine that that would be considered safe. So though I think your comments about, that generally fit, a lot of the kinds of senior citizen assisted living projects that we have are valid. I don't think they're transferable to this particular property. And that's one of the things that I find problematic about it. Because we're being asked to approve special changes for you so that you can build something that I think personally is highly inappropriate for this particular location.
Let me just interject at this point, Tom. It's not a matter of geography vis-à-vis 41. It's a matter of what zone you're in. I would start off by reminding you that the coastal high hazard area map that Mr. Arnold showed you, we're not in the coastal high hazard area. There are people who are further east than us in other locations who are. We're in a zone X, so this is not a location that's at risk. We will still have to, under the city's rules and ACA's rules, have an evacuation plan. And they will take elevations and zones and that sort of thing into account in determining whether you're in a location that has to evacuate in what storm event.
May I ask you a question? The last, I mean, I've been through several of these. The order is west of 41 has mandatory evacuation. I live west of 41, so I know that. So I can't, when the city determines that this is a zone, it doesn't say it's just the coastal high hazard area that has to evacuate. Because problems, first of all, coastal high hazard areas have not been updated sufficiently to recognize what we know or changing data, but...
Now, the changing data actually shows it going further west. I know that because I've talked to the people who do those studies and the LIDAR, so due to filling activities to the west, that line would actually move west from where it is currently.
Okay, well, when they show where the surges are going to come, it doesn't follow the contours of the coastal high hazard, unfortunately. But what, if we're talking about evacuation, they don't say just the coastal high hazard area has to evacuate. The statement has been very clearly, and it goes further than that, but very clearly, west of 41. This is way west of 41. It's not like just over the line of 41. It's all the way down to Vanderbilt Beach Road, which is a long way down and quite close to the shore. I don't, you know, I'm not sure it makes sense to do any development in that area, but certainly I would not be opposed if somebody wanted to take the risk that was able to deal with it. But I think there's a real problem of putting people who are among our most vulnerable citizens in a place like that. I just...
And I was admitting that we are going to follow the law. And if you're establishing a standard that's not in the law, then you're exceeding the standards for rezoning that are in the land development code. And that causes me some concern. Yes, sir, thank you.
I was saying, I think we have a case history of a similar facility just right over there by rural scoop. And that's on a one-story, you know, and that's been around since, you know, for a long time. So my question would be, in addressing this, how would, how have they dealt with that? It seems like there's, you know, we have, you know...
Yeah, and there's the facility in Collier County, the ALF, right across the street that Mr. Arnold pointed out on the aerial. And the answer is, it's, we've got to follow the Lee County Public Safety rules. You submit the proposed plan to them, they evaluate it, they tell you what changes you have to make. And in this case, because it's senior living, there's also the state agency that gets involved. And unfortunately for me, I just got done listening to my continuing education update on this very issue, which is why I know that the emergency order was, or rulemaking was done in regards to the generator because of the East Coast situation. So they are constantly updating the rules, making them more stringent, and will have to comply with those. But there's nothing unique about this property that we can't address the rules.
Does the city have anything further? Rebuttal by the applicant?
Oh, no, rebuttal would be after the public goes with all due, yes.
You want to hear from them?
Thank you. Because we agree with the staff, so there's nothing yet to rebut.
Is there anything further, any questions that any board members have at this time? We'll have time to discuss it afterward. Okay, this is the time for public comment. So it's your turn, folks. Three minutes apiece. Take the mic, take the microphone. So we're going to allow five minutes for you.
If you could put it showboat, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I'll try to speak fast, I'll turn on my jersey. My name is Kathleen Heaney. I am not an engineer, I am not an attorney. But I do own a property on the south adjacent area of the property in question for rezoning here. I'm also a veterinarian and I've dealt with legal entities. I worked, did some work with the FDA over the years. So my expertise is really, I'm an expert in my property. And I also have an elderly mother, she's 94. She used to live at the terraces. And I recently moved her to Bay Shore memory assisted living. Did a lot of research. I know that there are some good places and some bad places, and I share your concern. Dr. Craig, is it? Yes, thank you for bringing that up. That was a big concern because during Irma, they did move a lot of patients from a lot of other places to the Bay Shore. And it was crowded and it was crazy. But, so a lot of people did have to evacuate. And I can tell you, it's not so easy as just walking them around from what I know with my mother. Anyway, I wanted to just share with you my concerns. And I, as I said, I'm not an attorney, but I did look at the policy, you know, the development policy. And it does state that the intent is to protect existing and future residential areas from any encroachment of uses that are potentially... of uses that are potentially destructive to the character and integrity of the residential environment. And any requests for rezoning will be denied in the event that the buffers are not adequate to address potentially incompatible uses in a satisfactory manner. And I've heard a lot of discussion here today that says something is adequate, it's adequate, it's adequate, and I'm sure it is adequate for the developers, and what I want to raise here is, is it adequate for me as a homeowner that's going to directly face this facility? And I have nothing against memory units because my mama is there, okay? So, if I could, is there a clicker here? Okay, so I just wanted, here's, I don't have a fancy rendering, I just have, this is the property, and, here's a little, and my condo is right there, and so, these are my primary concerns, I'm just listing them here. Impact on the view and my personal health and welfare during the construction phase is a concern for me with the dust issue, especially if they start pulling out the trees. I'm very concerned with the environmental impact from increased impervious materials and subsequent increases in water runoff, and I did hear Mr. Delight say that their water won't combine with my water. My family has owned this condo since it was constructed, and we never had a water issue until Irma. I did get water during Irma, but I'm not typically in a flood area, but I am concerned. I live, I have two other homes, one is in a area along the Delaware River, and that floods, and it never used to flood, but because of increased impervious materials upriver, we now have a lot of flooding that we deal with. And I also have a house at the Jersey Shore, and there's some FEMA preliminary maps that have been reestablished there following Hurricane Sandy, so that's a major concern for me. I'm also concerned about the value of my property potentially being impacted, especially runoff becomes a problem. I am concerned about the renderings that were shown, nice pictures are beautiful when you, you know, are we really maintaining open green space? And I do see that that is a concern for the development plan for Benita Springs, and I agree with that. I was concerned about the traffic, but I felt pretty good about what was presented other than I don't think it...
We have a minute left.
Oh, gosh, out of my five? All right, let me go through here. Here's my lanai, I'm the first floor, that's what I look at when I have my coffee in the morning, I don't care if it's exotics or whatever, it's beautiful. There, you can see there's a little marker there, and some trees are already being marked, I don't know why, it's disconcerting, I don't really want to lose that view. I don't mind the structure, but that's what I look at, and, you know, I'd really rather not see, when I look at this, I see a lot of, I see a lot of concrete, and I think they said there's only thirty feet, that's a chip, I can chip a golf ball that distance, and that's pretty darn close. This is my mother's facility, she looks out that window, and I don't, you know, I, I just want an enhanced buffer around my property.
Please wrap it up.
Okay.
You're over five minutes now.
Thank you, if I could request another minute?
Wrap it up, come on.
Here's my property, and I just wanted to point out that this flood assessment, FEMA flood assessment, these are all flood zones that surround that property there, and that's a concern. From two thousand and eight, those FEMA maps were devised, and I think what you're looking at, yes, technically, it is a non-flood zone, but it's, I don't know if that's realistic from today's environment. Thank you, I'll wrap it up with that.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good morning, Chairman, Board. I'm Michael Mauer with William Rabus Real Estate, I represent the prospective purchaser and developer for the project. I would like to make a couple comments addressing some of the concerns that you've obviously heard through email and today. The, what we haven't heard about is what would, what would be the situation in the alternative? What if we had two-story or three-story condos built here? What would the view be? Would it be into somebody else's lanai? Would it be on somebody else's pool? The, the alternatives without a full comp plan change, if you stay in that residential component would be apartments, or condos, or single-family homes. And I think that from a noise perspective, a traffic perspective, an odor perspective, that the use that's proposed is less intrusive on their neighbors than the one that, than any of the other alternatives. The ALF facility is quiet, it doesn't generate a lot of traffic, it's going to look beautiful, it's going to address the need in the community for additional beds for people that need them, and the, the buffer that was discussed is going to be enhanced, it's going to be nicer than what's there now, which is basically pepper hedge and vines and exotics, and will be enhanced by the landscaping that's put in place. So, I offer to you that the, the use that's proposed is the best one that could move forward under the, the current zoning map for the city of Benita, and that anything in the alternative would be something that would decrease the property value of the, the property of the south even more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robert. Further public comment?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Garen Grup with John Arwood Properties, I represent the church, and in signing the original listing agreement, the church was seeking something that was compatible and that was going to be a good neighbor for them, and their, their original request was for an ALF. I think you all can appreciate as professionals, when someone kind of boxes you in and gives you a directive, sometimes it's very challenging to meet those needs. We had no fewer than ten different parties that were all ALFs interested in this property, fortunately for us. I, I do think of all the developers that contacted us, this is the least intensive plan and the lowest plan of everything. In regards to prior comments about, about Ms. Keeney's setback and her view, it's my understanding that there's about forty feet plus minus from the back of her building to the property line, in which Vanderbilt Lakes is, is very capable of, of putting in their own landscaping. Right now, they're depending on the landscaping that is in the buffer that is not on their property. So, I think that's something that they could consider that would possibly appease everybody. The buyers of the property, the prospective purchasers, made several attempts to meet with the owners, the president of the association over there, to no avail, which staff is well, has well documented. Last week, I had a call from a townhouse developer from mid-Florida that wanted to, that wants to develop townhouses in this project if it does not go forward. So, that is, you know, what Mr. Mauer just referenced is certainly possible moving forward. We also had a number of self-storage facilities, which obviously on that parcel of land would more than likely be, be multi-story, as well as some, as well as some light commercial uses. So, I do think this is fitting within the future land use of medium-density multifamily, and I do think it's going to be a good neighbor for the church, it's going to give them opportunities for outreach, and it's going to give the members there some religious opportunities that are close by. That's all I have, and I hope you'll take that into consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further public comment? Hearing none, rebuttal from the applicant.
Yes, sir, thank you. We would recall Mr. Arnold. Mr. Arnold, if I look at Conservation and Coastal Management Element under Goal Two, specifically Policy 2.1.1, it says, "New hospitals, congregate living facilities, or projects for the developmentally disabled in the city shall prepare an emergency preparedness plan acceptable to the Director of the Lee County Division of Emergency Management prior to receiving a final development order." Will this development have to comply with that particular comprehensive plan policy?
Yes, this project has to comply with all components of your comprehensive plan, and my testimony as well as staff have indicated that we do.
And does an applicant have a right to rely on the requirements that are set forth in the duly adopted Comp Plan and Land Development Code, and not some standard that has not yet been adopted?
That's correct, our standard is the comprehensive plan and the land development code.
And there's been a reference to the land, to the land use category for this property. What are the uses that are permitted in this category, and is agriculture one of them?
Agriculture is not necessarily a permitted use under the medium-density multifamily, it does allow a variety of residential dwelling unit types by right. The agricultural zoning that's on the site would however allow some agricultural uses, it would also allow, as I said, churches and preschools, et cetera, similar to what's been built today.
There's been a concern that there'll be a lack of open space. Is the open space requirement forty percent?
Yes, for residential plan development, open space is forty percent.
Have we asked for a deviation from that requirement?
We have not.
There was a concern raised about views, can you, you tell me what the separation distance is between those existing units and the units proposed here?
Sure, just give me a moment, I, instead of pulling back up my presentation, I think it's on my slide, if I can take one second to find that. We called it our Southern Buffer Exhibit, and what we're proposing is a thirty-foot setback from the southern property line. There's a thirty-foot natural vegetation buffer that exists at Bermuda Isle, and they have about a twenty-foot building face setback to that buffer, so that's fifty plus thirty, that's a separation of eighty feet between their two-story buildings and our single-family, and you'll have essentially two landscapes, you'll have their mature landscape buffer, and I know that in working with them, they're, they're removing some of their exotics and supplementing the buffer that they have, we'll be required to obviously remove our exotics and plant new vegetation meeting the minimum code requirements.
Having heard the concern that the doctor raised, has that changed your expertise as to whether or not this project is or will be compatible with the residential and commercial uses that surround this property?
No, it hasn't, if, if you don't mind, I wouldn't mind touching on a couple of those, the, the view and health and welfare, you know, her testimony was from a first-floor unit, her, her impact and view will actually be lessened by the fact that she's on a ground floor versus being on a second-floor elevation with a, that would look down onto us, she'll be at a horizontal, and there'll be landscaping with hedge, et cetera, that will obscure that view. She also talked about impervious area increases, and I think as Mr. Delitt testified, we're within the limits of the impervious area design for the original water management permit. I can't testify to property value, but I, there are other examples of assisted living facilities, they are deemed to be residential communities under your code, so I don't think that residential to residential in that context is a diminution of property value. The open space, and she talked about enhanced buffering, and obviously, we will put in our buffer, and, and that's just the nature of the game, we're required to remove our exotics, every project has to. It would be nice if we had other mature vegetation that exists there, we don't, but we will be planting vegetation. Traffic, I think you heard in her testimony that her, her concern was lessened after hearing our testimony. And then patient resident safety, I understand the concern, but as Ms. Montgomery read in your comprehensive plan and has indicated previously, we will have to file the appropriate evacuation plans, and there's no prohibition for an assisted living facility to be located west of US forty-one. So, in that regard, yes, I maintain my contention we're a compatible project.
Thank you very much, we don't have anything further unless you gentlemen have, ladies have questions.
Are there any questions from the, from the board? Any further questions? Discussion or a motion? Is there anything further from the city? Is there a motion on this matter? Somebody has to make something.
I make a motion to approve the project as presented by the city with the deviations and, and conditions as outlined and as agreed to by the applicant.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Chairman, could I offer possibly an amendment to that?
Yes, you can offer an amendment.
As stated, the, in the motion, the conditions, A through J, were accepted a few minutes ago by the applicant. I would like to emphasize the importance of Item B in those exceptions, and it's been indicated you will be willing to negotiate that with the city.
Yeah.
I would like to suggest that the motion include that be a mandatory requirement without negotiation.
Yeah, I, I'm not trying to negotiate it away, I just want to know what the, what the standard is. In other words, it says we're going to model, but what I want to, what I wanted to have further discussion with the staff is, is what the goal I'm trying to meet, so I know what that is, and if we can identify that in the condition, it would be helpful to us. In other words, we're going to model to, you know, set water levels, or whatever it is we're trying to do, I just want greater clarity. So, I'm not trying to negotiate it away, I'm just trying to negotiate greater clarity. Does that help? Or does that make sense?
As long as you don't try to minimize the hundred-year storm event.
Excuse me here, we're having a discussion, you want to move to amend?
Yes.
To Worcester, and, and tell us what your amendment is precisely.
Included in the motion was these A through J conditions. I would like to include with that that Item B in those A through J not be allowed to be reduced in negotiations with the city.
Would you read that to us, just so we all understand it?
Well, it, my concern is that the stormwater, the way it's currently...
Let's just, let's just do the amendment. What you're, as I understand it, Condition B?
Yes.
Is a mandatory condition without...
Negotiation.
Without any possibility of negotiating it down?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, now, discussion, if you want to...
Could somebody read Condition B to us?
Well, Condition E is, it's, it's actually Condition Five-B, and it's provided drainage analysis demonstrating that site development plan has no adverse impact on adjacent properties, and that there is sufficient onsite drainage, onsite drainage capacity, stormwater conveyance, and controlled discharge. The drainage analysis shall include but not be limited to providing an interconnected pond and channel routing model, the hundred-years, twenty-four-hour storm event, and this primary storm used to evaluate the proposed design. The city reserves the right to request additional modeling of the storm events upon review of all data. All data submitted shall be formatted for inclusion into the city's interconnected pond routing model. The drainage map for all contributory areas within and into the development showing flows, path, arrows, slash arrows, existing onsite and offsite drainage structures, sizes and inverts, and some sub-basin areas, and two hydraulic and hydraulic, hydrologic and hydraulic calculations for the five-twenty-five and one-hundred-year storm design events in order to establish the existing baseline conditions. What I will, what I will add to this, read, now that I'm reading it, this is essentially a request to add additional data. It, it is not, as Ms. Montgomery pointed out, it's not truly a standard to be met, so I can see some of the value in that, but I also believe that one of the modifications Mr. Worcester pointed out was at a minimum one-hundred-year storm event, I think that could be something that is a hard, hard standard, at least. The rest of this is this data analysis, it's not, it's not working towards a standard.
I agree with that. The hundred-year event is the one I want it designed to.
So, there's a motion and a second, that...
I'll just second it, a motion. Thank you, Roger. The original motion I seconded, yes.
There hasn't been a second for the amendment yet.
Not for the amendment, to make it mandatory.
There's a second to the amendment, okay? Is there further discussion? Is everybody willing to accept the amendment? Is everybody willing to accept the amendment or, or do you want a roll call?
Well, can I, can I ask a question? Mike Della just pointed out to me that the hundred-year storm event, ask the question because you'll ask it better.
Sure, I, I thought as Ms. Montgomery had indicated, we were going to discuss this with staff to elaborate that out. The hundred-year storm event doesn't refer to which development elevation. Is it the finished floor elevation, the perimeter berm elevation, parking lot elevation? So if there was a reference to that, uh, or if it was just elaborated that the conveyance system would be designed for that hundred-year storm event, something to that effect, just at least to clarify what we're designing to. And I thought we would work that with staff. I had to talk to staff about it previously. I think we came to an understanding that seemed reasonable for everybody, made engineering sense. So if you're going to lock that language in, then it needs to be a solid reference, otherwise, as Ms. Montgomery said, if that came out.
My, my reading of this, these conditions and discussions with staff previously is that the standard would be to maintain that the capacity of the system will meet the one-hundred-year, not that the building structures are any, any impervious, that the capacity as a whole will meet the one-hundred-year storm event.
That was not my understanding. If that is the, that.
Excuse me here. It's our turn. You had your turn. You had your turn. This is our turn. There's a motion on the floor. Uh, with a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion to amend to include the hundred-year storm event as a mandatory requirement? Any further questions? And any further comments? Roll call on the amendment, on Mr. Worcester's amendment.
Robert Insirpy?
Yes.
Barbara Craig?
Yes.
Russ Nguyen?
Yes.
Cameron Curlender?
Yes.
Richard Donley?
Yes.
Roger Brunswick?
Yes.
James Worster?
Yes.
Now, the, uh, there's a motion on the floor, having dealt with the, uh, the amendment. There's a motion on the floor to approve the project as amended with the conditions previously stated. Is there any further discussion on the main motion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Russ Nguyen?
Yes.
Cameron Curlender?
No.
Richard Donley?
Yes.
Roger Brunswick?
Yes.
James Worster?
No.
Robert Insirpy?
No.
Barbara Craig?
No.
By my count, it's four to three opposed to, uh, this. We are moving on to the next case now. Thank you very much for everybody for being here. We appreciate it. We have, uh, we can move forward. Anybody need some time? Okay, so this, uh, the next case, uh, on our, uh, is the Naples Community Hospital signage.
Sign special exception, yes.
For the hospital.
Good morning. I'm Mark Brinchley. My address is thirty-seven ninety Beacon Ridgeway, Clermont, Florida. I'm glad to be here to present the dessert to your ending of the meeting. This would be a much more simple request. It does with one site at two-four-zero, four-zero South Tammy-Yammy Trail. It is a request to, uh, a special exception to allow three additional signs to a building that has two frontages. One frontage on, um, US forty-one, one frontage on Walden Center Drive. Your ordinance does not permit, uh, these additional signs, even though there is an additional frontage. So this request allows a sign. Now, this is, this is the presentation drawn that I had to the neighborhood meeting. It's, I'm sure you're going to see some much better, uh, close-ups, but, um, the signs here on the right are the ones that are proposed. This is a healthcare facility which has multi-uses inside the building. It has an emergency, it has a immediate care and it has a normal office care facility. And, and because of the diversity of care, it has been the desire of NCH to have signage that allows a reasonable wayfinding opportunity for the many customers who will be accessing the site. At the neighborhood meeting, there were five individuals from the neighborhood who attended. They had no issues with any of these signed proposals. Their concern was, um, neighborhood, um, concern for the parking lot lights that had shone into the neighborhood. They were concerned about the, uh, the noise that would be generated from sirens for the emergency and, um, other extrinsic features. They were all addressed by the appropriate NCH officials who were there and said that they would all be complied with at the time that the, um, order to occupy the building, the CO, would be, would be given. So, uh, those who attended the meeting have no objection. I don't think you've had any objection from the letters that were sent either. So this is a, a, a pretty simple request and Mary will show a better sight. Because when we were at the neighborhood meeting, everybody knew the site because they were from the neighborhood. So that's why I don't have a site plan on this composite. But this shows what has been permitted here on the, uh, on the left and here, or on, on this right and on this left is the, are the three. So it's a logo that can be seen from Walden Center Drive, but not from forty-one. It says the NCH logo. And then on, on two sides of a canopy that covers the entrance to the care facility is the physician's group name. And it's only seen from Walden Center Drive, but really from the parking lot because it's so small. And it cannot be seen from, um, the, uh, passage by on US forty-one. So turn the time to Mary. She can show a better site plan for you to become oriented to the site.
Before you go, um, is it, um, am I correct in saying that the real issue here, as you've defined it in your application, is that there's some confusion with regard to the emergency room? That's the real issue here, isn't it? The gravement of the whole thing?
That's part of it. And, and they have signage which addresses the emergency entrances and so forth. This is for another part of the building that doesn't deal with the emergency with, with a, a, a normal patient intake.
So you're saying just the opposite of what I'm saying, that this does not have to do with the emergency room?
No.
It has to do with the physician's practice?
And with other wayfinding, yes.
Then help me understand, because in your submittal, you cited all these cases where people were having problems going to the emergency room. What was the point of that if, if this is really about the physicians?
Well, the, the limitation of, of the number of signs is part of the issue that we are here. And, and they, and the owners and managers of the building require those other signs to meet the wayfinding requirements of the emergency and the, the immediate care sections of the, of the building. And, and then there is another section of the, of the building that is used for, uh, I guess, normal care and normal health facility.
Patient service.
Yes. And so the ordinance doesn't permit additional signage without this special exception.
May I ask a question? Please. How many signs are we talking about? Numbers?
Three, there are three additional signs.
Why do you need three additional signs? Why can't you have one sign that lists everything? With an arrow or whatever and that's it?
Well, they.
You don't want to make Walden Center, which is a semi-private road, quite quiet. You don't want to make that a, uh, offshoot of forty-one with signage all over the place. People know where it is. They know they can see it off of forty-one. And there is sign, there is a sign in the back on Walden Center. You don't need any more signage. You don't.
But the, the ordinance allows a.
I know what the ordinance allows. I'm just stating that I don't think additional signage is needed, especially on Walden Center. And I'm sure, and I don't know the five people that were in attendance, I happen to live back there, okay? And I use Walden Center. And I don't want to see a bunch of signs back there.
It's one sign.
This is not forty-one. Then have one sign. I just asked you how many signs you're talking about. You said three.
The one sign, the, the logo, the NCH sign.
Forget the logo. All you need is one sign that says emergency room, doctor's office, whatever, all on one sign. That's it. Case closed, just like Pelican Landing has. That's all you need. We don't want, we don't want these streets to start looking like, uh, forty-one or the East Coast with just a marauder's signs. That's nonsense. It's not needed.
Well, it certainly isn't a proliferation of signs that, that's being proposed. So let me introduce Jack, who manages the facility.
Hi, I'm, uh, Jack Alrick with Naples Community Hospital. You're absolutely correct and I, I do want to clarify in, in your point as far as the question. We do have confusion, um, with the emergency room and, and I think there's a couple of issues that, you know, the, the building is, is unique in the usage. It does front two roads. Uh, also, we have two separate entrances. The entrance to the emergency, we have emergency over that entrance, the portico share. What we find is, uh, our, most of our parking is behind the building. So those people that want to access the emergency department, many of them are parking behind the building. They're coming in and the first entrance they see, which is the south-facing one, has no signage. And, and therefore they get confused. They're not sure if they're going into the emergency room or if they're going to the imaging center. We actually have, uh, four separate services in the building. We have the hospital emergency department on the first floor. We also have outpatient imaging center on the first floor. On the second floor are physician offices and also an outpatient surgery. So there's a lot of activity that people might come into the building for. We wanted to mostly clarify to the people going to the emergency department where that entrance is. We're, I, I couldn't agree more. We're not looking for advertisement on this building. We, we have found that there's a, a big issue with wayfinding. People, people are confused. We've, we've tried to put a couple, a little signs with arrows pointing to where they should go. People get confused. They confuse when they get in the building and, you know, we're trying to work on that as well. But this is more a clarification of the entrances and where they need to go.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a question that I was not clear as to exactly who, where it was you were trying to give wayfaring help? I mean, I go up and down, um, this back road Walden Center all the time and it, there is not anything where your driveway is that's very clear that this is the turn-in to your spot. And I can understand why, you know, a cement thing that said New Haven Hospital Emergency and Doctor's Office this way would be very helpful. It also would be in keeping with the kinds of signs that the other, um, entities like Pelican Landing in that area use. What I wasn't quite so sure was what the illuminated signs were needed, if what you needed to do is get people in into the right spot. And I'm always, um, I guess, concerned about that difference between advertising and wayfaring. And I absolutely think you ought to have good wayfaring signs. People who are going to an emergency room are not in great state usually. They're very nervous and upset and signs really help. But I'm not certain that you need big lighted signs up there. You need better signage down where people are going to notice it. And maybe I'm wrong with that, but that was my confusion in reading this presentation. It seemed to me that where you needed the signs, you weren't proposing to put them, which was on that entrance road, which seems to me that's where you would want to have a small sign that said, this was New Haven Hospital Emergency Room, Doctor's Office, this away.
Is there, you said that there were some, uh, can you show us just, uh, just for curiosity, what, what you were trying to propose? I mean, did you have something up there that you wanted a? For more of a visual?
This is the west elevation along Walden Center. And then for the canopy? This is the south elevation, so you'll see it from the east and west.
So, so what, yeah, what you're, I'm sorry, what you're looking at, um, as people come in from forty-one, forty-one would be on the right side of this, this picture here. So they're coming in. The first entrance is the emergency room entrance. And then to the left, where we're asking for additional signage, is a secondary entrance to the building as well. It's, uh, it's, it's very much a sa, a similar to the emergency exit, but it's not the emergency room. So when people come, uh, and many of them will park behind the building, which will be to the left of that, they'll, they'll come and without that signage over that covering, that, that back one, they get confused. Then now they don't know, are, are they in emergency room or are they going to a physician office? And, and so we're trying to eliminate the confusion. And whatever signage is allowed that, that we can have, we are open to it because we find this. We've, we've got the same situation and, um, we have a similar facility in Collier County. It's a freestanding ED and much of the same services in it. And, um, we were, we found the same issues and we were able to differentiate. We had two entrances just like this. One was a physician and one was an emergency room. And that did seem to clarify for a lot of people, especially those going to the emergency room.
Is that how it looks now? I mean, just blank like that? I mean, any signage at all? I mean, that's how it looks?
Not sure.
Well, there appears to be a sign, excuse me, there appears to be a sign.
Does it say?
Oh, that says, what does that say on the, above the E there?
This is both sides because that's where they're proposing.
On both sides.
Physician group. There is a sign on this end for the ambulance or emergency? Ambulance.
What's over this, what's over, that's not the same. What's over, what's this saying here?
Is it facing forty-one?
Huh?
No, this is the south side.
What side?
No offense, but I think this is a poor presentation and confusing.
This isn't what's facing Walden Center or forty-one.
That may be clearer to see, but I, where's, where's US forty-one on this?
You're right. You're right.
But it's going this way.
Are these signs facing forty-one or are they facing Walden Center?
One sign faces Walden Center proposed.
And how big is that sign?
She has those, right, A.
And what do you want to put on that sign? NCH on that Walden Center? Is that what you want to put on?
Yes, that's on that one wall.
On Walden Center?
Yeah.
Okay.
And how big is that sign? I'm asking again.
Mary, can you read that?
Hundred and ninety-five square feet.
Is that it, right there?
And it's a illuminated sign? No. I don't think that should fly at all. Hundred and ninety-five square feet? No.
Uh, before, before we go any further here, um, counselor, there's some confusion here.
Yeah, this was supposed to be the easy one.
This is the easy one. So it turns out, if I'm, my ears are correct, that we had one point of view from the first speaker, another point of view from the second speaker. We don't have any idea, based upon the presentation, what these signs are going to look like and where they're going to be posted. At least I don't.
I don't.
I have a suggestion for the applicant and it's only a suggestion. I have a suggestion for the applicant, and it's only a suggestion. I would suggest that we withdraw the application. Can we do that without prejudice?
Let me, let me, let me...
So that they can resubmit addition, or we could adjourn the matter. However, however it is, I want to give you an opportunity to resubmit.
Mary has the exact pictures of this proposed sign.
I don't have the...
Mary has them. She'll present them.
They'll be in your package.
Yeah, I, I, I've got, I've got those too. I have no idea what that means.
Let's, while the applicant does bear the burden of showing that their case, perhaps it may be illuminated if staff goes through their presentation. If the questions are still there, then perhaps it would be an idea to move the...
That is exactly what I was going to say, and if at that point you're not satisfied... My name is John Dahmer, and if you're still not satisfied, we can continue this hearing to the next zoning board here.
Okay, let's do that.
Thank you. So this is for the NCH special exception for wall signage. They're requesting three additional wall signs in addition to the signs that are already permitted, as our code requires a special exception for exceptional signage. So they're located fronting US 41 and Walden Center Drive. Their existing elevations are NCH logo signs along the west, I'm sorry, the east elevation and the north elevation.
Going to that, because east was...
Yes, I don't know what it's for me to do from here.
Where's the pointer?
Laser.
Excuse me, and while you're doing that, could you, with the pointer, this says both sides here?
Where it's going.
Point out where that is.
You could just go up and use your finger. That would be okay. It's only a few of them.
So currently, we have signs here and here. So they're requesting an additional sign along this side that would face Walden Center Drive, and then they have the portage here, and are requesting signs along each side of that canopy. So these would be the... So the NCH would be along Walden Center Drive.
I thought there was some property on the...
What, on the building?
Or freestanding?
Wall sign.
NCH would be right here, along the wall on the west elevation, facing Walden Center Drive. So that's where the...
It's going to be up on the wall there.
Yes.
And is it just going to be letters, or is it going to be illuminated letters?
It is going to be illuminated. And this would be flush against the wall.
And that actually faces the driveway that comes in from...
This faces Walden Center Drive.
Correct.
And it faces the... Yeah.
But it's way in on the property, right?
Right? Diamond Oaks. It faces Diamond Oaks.
This would be facing Walden Center Drive.
It's facing Walden Center Drive?
Yes.
And the sign is 195 square feet?
It's fifteen feet wide, east and west, and seven foot eight high.
It's my, a little bit bigger than me this way and that way. But it's on the building.
On the top of the building.
You're not talking about a free floating sign out near Walden Center Drive. You're talking about this, it's way in. Okay. That's, I think, what we need to have clarified.
Does that sign, being as illuminated, will that interfere with the residents at Diamond Oaks? That's what I'm asking. Will it interfere with that?
No.
Or is the building turned around and it's facing it?
This will not interfere with Diamond Oaks. In addition, when I continue, you'll see that we have a condition that during the, from dusk to dawn, they will be dimmed 50 percent. So there will be no light to emit from any residential...
Right. Second question, is there any signage that's going to be on the ground, on Walden Center, or into the, into the facility?
They are not requesting that with this, no.
They're not requesting that, that's where it should be.
Do they have the ability to put a ground sign there? Our code does allow it.
Our code does not?
It does.
As far as I can figure out, then, what you're trying to do is help people, once they get there, find where to go on the property. So that's really the agenda, not to get them into the property, but once they're there, to find the proper entrance to go. Okay. That wasn't clear. It's now clear. Thank you.
I have a question.
That makes much more sense.
One of the exhibits in our packet is this. I assume, and this is the property, before development.
Correct.
Why is that even in here?
It was part of the application requirement, and this was prior to, they applied prior to building it.
Wouldn't it be more helpful to have a view after the, after the site, site is built out?
You think, Roger?
You think? I think this is a poor presentation, my opinion personally, and I'm having a hard time following what's going on.
I'll finish the presentation, and then we can confer afterward. So as I mentioned, they would be, they're requesting NCH physician group on each side of the canopy. So you would see that from the west side, which would be the Walden Center Drive, and then it would be facing 41 as well. So both sides of that canopy.
One second, one second. Mr. Chairman, Roger's not alone. I'm confused in this thing. Why can't, can't we just go back to square one? You know, just reconfigure this thing, make it a little bit more explanatory than it is, make it a little bit larger so we can all read the stuff, and then come back with it, come back to us with it. I mean, we're sitting here, you're going through this. I mean, we're lost, half of us are lost on this thing.
Doesn't make any sense.
Mr. Inservy, let me address that. I think what our counsel has suggested is that we finish and allow the city to do it. I think we are unanimous, unanimous in saying, this presentation doesn't cut it. We don't understand it.
No.
That, without ascribing any fault, it just, we're having a hard, you see this?
Chairman, I...
I want to give them an opportunity to do the right thing and not deny the application.
Chairman, rather than act precipitously, I discussed the item with the applicant, and they have agreed to bring it back, will bring it back in August, your next meeting. But if you could maybe continue to elaborate on what clarifications you'd like to see in the presentation, that way we can be certain that things are there.
These are all wall signs, not monument signs. Monument signs would be on the ground. These are on the wall.
Yes.
I would like to know exactly where they're going, what they're going to look like, including dimensions, illumination, effect on the community, and I'd like to know from the applicant, following our code, is it a fair conclusion that you, when you built the building and put the signs up, created the condition that you're now requesting relief from? Because if that's so, we must, as a matter of law, deny your application. I'd like to be helpful to you, but I'm having a hard time here.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. Did I understand that code allows a monument sign on Walden Center Drive?
Yes.
We do allow the ground sign, we allow a ground sign along each street front edge, correct?
The majority of the traffic for this facility is coming in off of US 41 and not Walden. Walden drives a secondary entrance.
Correct.
My opinion is a monument sign would be better served than some glaring, whatever they're going to put on the wall. Which wall, I don't know.
I think, to me, that the confusion was, who were they trying to help? And I thought initially you were trying to help people that were driving by to find their way in. But that doesn't sound to me, from what you said, what you're really trying to do. You're trying to do, when people get there and have parked their car, how do I get to the right entrance? And there are a lot of different ways that you could accomplish that. Having signs that you could look up and see is probably the quickest and easiest one. And now that I sort of understand the purpose, I have a lot less confusion about it. But there are, of course, other ways. You could have lighted low-level signs that said, "Emergency Room this way," with arrows from the parking lot. And so I guess the question is, that is confusing people still, and a little bit me, is, are these signs such that they're not going to be offensive to anyone else around them or intrusive? And I think the best way to do that, now that I understand where, where on earth these are going on the building, is to show that the signs aren't fronting Walden Street, and they're not fronting places where they're going to interfere with neighborhoods. So that, that I think is what we were all looking for, is something that made that clearer. So when we take this up, in one page, it says, here's where the building is, here's where the signs are going, here's where the streets are around it, and then we can visualize better what, what it is you're asking for. I personally don't have any problem with it now that I understand what you're trying to do. I don't know that this is the least obtrusive way. I don't know that, and how everyone else feels about that. But at least I get now what it is you're trying to accomplish. And I think that's what we're seeking, is so that we can make rational decisions. We need to have, thoroughly understand what's there. And I'm comfortable with it now, but if other people aren't, then I'm also comfortable with whatever people think.
So we...
It sounds like...
They're agreed to a continuance?
They've agreed to a continuance, but it sounds like you would like them to provide more clear diagrams, maybe, maybe street-level views, something like that to make sense and to address the hardship.
How that building sits on the property instead of just a blank...
Yeah.
That's the one that I think will overcome most people's concerns, certainly overcame mine.
Mr. Chairman, what I'm seeing, and clarification, of course, but I'm seeing this more as a promotional vehicle for NCH, the building, NCH Hospital, than to be helpful. And it, I just had to throw that in. The biggest...
Well, that's an issue. I mean, if that's, I mean, that presents a legal question. If that's the case...
But at least, at least now they know to address that in the next meeting.
I, I, I would, in hearing my colleagues speak here, I would consider, I mean, if the real problem here is, is that there's confusion, can you use monument signs, which would be less obtrusive? I mean, maybe, maybe that's an answer, where we can compromise it. But I think you've got an issue here, you can see.
Low-level, where people can see them as they're driving?
You know, we'd like to work with you. We're...
Just a point, one point. Take a look at Pelican Landing. They have like a, Europe is known for them, a big sign that has all the arrows on it, where it goes, and what's in that area, and how to get there. One sign, and that's it, case closed, if that's what you want to put by Walden Center. But as far as putting these illuminated signs on a building, I've got to go along with Mr. Brunswick. It doesn't sound like you've got the best interest at heart of patients. You know, I think it's more, hey, look, look what we've got here, look what we've built here. I mean, that's, no.
So my recommendation would be to continue this matter to a time certain, which is August, your August 20th meeting at 9:00 AM. That way, we don't have to re-advertise and go through those, that process.
I want to talk about the August 20th meeting for a second. But hearing no objection from the board, we will continue this matter until the next meeting. Is that all right with everybody? Good. Okay. So that concludes the formal part of our agenda. I want to talk about a few things with you before we adjourn, if you'll give me a couple of minutes here, please. First, it turns out that my wife and I are on a overseas trip starting August 20th.
Oh, wonderful. And we go?
We can do the meeting on the plane.
Meet over there.
We're going to Kenya and Tanzania.
Ooh, better yet, a safari.
So can we, is it possible to move it up a week? Would that be all right with you? Otherwise, it doesn't matter if I'm not here, just, is there a problem with that? We have to re-advertise it?
That'll be the 13th then, Tuesday?
Well, I can't do the 13th.
Okay, so leave it, leave it the 20th. Is, are there any other cases that'll be presented on the 20th?
The cell tower cases might go to August if they're ready, and then we have three Habitat for Humanity cases that might be ready. So it might be another heavy agenda.
It's a big agenda.
Yeah.
I'll miss it. It's my fault.
It's not your fault. Either make it the 20th or do it the 13th. The 13th...
We've got other people who've already set it up. I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to do that. Just, the 20th...
Mr. Chairman?
Right, that's what, yeah, I know that, but, you know...
It's okay. Yeah, I just absolutely cannot miss the 20th.
No, I understand that.
Mr. Chairman, appreciate your problem, but will you...
But it's my problem, not yours. I'm not going to make it your problem, so, okay.
Wait a minute. You know what's at issue here. We're going to get a great presentation coming back. So would you go along with us proceeding without you?
Yes, of course.
Yeah, we got a vice chairman, you know?
Right. The vice chairman will chair the meeting.
Does that work with the applicant?
So it'll continue on the 20th, if you can avoid adding cases. I'd appreciate it. If you can't, that's fine. I want to talk to you about two other things. So my term as chair is up, and it's up either this meeting or next meeting. It depends on how you calculate. And I've had a conversation with the mayor to see, and before I did that, I consulted with the vice chairman. By design, I did not consult with any of you because I felt, you know, this is not appropriate for me to do that. I did not want to. So in that discussion with the mayor, we discussed me staying on until we finish our work, that we started on all the amending the statute. We've put that off, and the reason we haven't gone forward with that is because we're waiting for a STERO to submit their work. They've just done a total redo of their code. Why spend another $260,000 on a lawyer when we can look at theirs, see what we like? Everybody gets input.
As we discussed.
Right? So, so the mayor at the last city council meeting asked the city council to, or asked the city manager to approve a way that I could stay on until we complete that, and then I would leave and somebody else, presumably one of you would take over. So that's the first thing I wanted to say. The second thing is, I think I'm compelled to tell you this. I, I went to speak against the mining project that's being proposed in Lee County, and I did not do so lightly. I thought about it for a great while. There are a number of people who asked me to do it, whom I respect enormously, and I have a mining background. I served as the chief administrative officer of the largest gold mining company in the world. So I conducted audits, environmental audits globally, and so on and so forth. You don't need, that's all. But this was a big issue, and I felt that because the city council was unanimous in opposing it, I would not be treading on policy matters as much. But I wanted you to know I did it and what my thinking was. So that's that. Anybody else have anything to say before we go? Well, good for you.
I want to thank you for doing that, and you can watch that on the, if you want to see his presentation and others, on the commission's website. But I was very glad that you went to do that.
You did a good job, by the way, there.
Very good job.
I didn't think so, but, okay.
Well, they didn't let you completely finish, and I'd read the whole presentation. It was, was really excellent. Not that it hadn't been bad.
Is there anything further from the board? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
So do we go eat this food that they...
It's, it's in the kitchen for you. It's ready for you, just lunch.
What's that?
We have lunch for you all in the kitchen. It was, we weren't here.
Roger, you go in there first.
Have to.
So it's how it is, right?
Should be enough for staff and board to...
You're the vice chairman, you go.